Denise, you want to do the announcements?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Same announcements we've had on the agenda for many meetings. As far as we're being recorded live on CNET's YouTube channel, there's a link on our agenda and you can also find this program afterwards. You'll, you can receive a link to view it on cnetone.org. We're always asking for township residents' email addresses. If you haven't received tonight's agenda in an email, you are not on our email list, sir. Please go to our page, hit the Contact Us button and enter your email and you'll get updates for what's going on in the township as well as agendas and notices. We always need volunteers for various boards and commissions. There's some openings after the reorg meeting. If you are interested in volunteering, please let me know. Two items to note. Last meeting during the appointments to various committees, CCMPO Technical is actually going to be Chairman Piper, while Barb Spencer will be the representative for CCMPO Coordinating. Dave, we had talked about that and I double-checked with Barb and that was the understanding for that. And then Port Matilda Fire Company is looking for some volunteers to help with some grant writing. The next grant is due somewhere in the May or June timeframe and they just aren't able to find somebody to help them with that. And if somebody has some experience writing grants and wants to help our fire company with some free money, please let me know. I'll get you in touch with Port Matilda Fire Company.
Citizen comments. Brenda Black, letter dated January the 2nd, 2022 regarding her mailbox.
Yes, we received an email from Brenda Black about her mailbox and damage to it from the 24th of December, 2021. She included a picture and has provided a lengthy email about the conditions and feels that we hit that with a plow. I will say that staff has always been fantastic about letting us know when a mailbox has actually been hit by the plow and we've been happy to replace or at least provide some sort of receptacle so that people can still receive mail if we've hit a box. I asked the roadmaster about this and he said it was not hit by him. You can see clearly from the picture. I will tell you, if he's been driving the big Western Star truck, had that hit this, I would say there'd be considerable larger amount of damage that it probably wouldn't be even up. And the general rule is it's in our right-of-way. We've not replaced it unless it's something that we've damaged directly through a hit from the plow. But I provided that information and was told in this email that our staff is lying and that it's possible legal action will come if this hasn't been restored to its pristine condition by February 13th.
Mailboxes in our right-of-way?
Yes.
Any members of the board like to comment?
Is it, is it set back properly?
Do we know that? Do we, aren't there, there's specifications for the setback on the-
Yeah, it's available through the map, the postal service. You can get the setbacks.
Do we have a separate rule from what they use?
I have no idea. We don't have any rules regarding it.
Okay. It just can't be really in the way of the area for the plow to be able to operate properly, right?
Right.
If they have a setback enough for that.
Pretty much every mailbox in the township is probably in the township's road right-of-way.
Yeah.
And the height of the plow in comparison to where that panel fell off,
we would have hit and ripped that entire thing off because the plow is not shaped to go under it like that and the plow that's on the truck is too large that it wouldn't have hit.
Is this Cedar Ridge? Is that 148 Cedar Ridge?
Yes.
143.
A 143. It's not high-
Just my personal opinion, but if that was hit by the big truck, then that's the one he's been driving. That would have been obliterated. That's not damage from any of our equipment. Now, I can't say what it was, but I highly, I, I can't imagine that's, there's no way that was hit by us, any snowplow really, but especially that beast of a truck with a snowplow on the front. I, I just, I just don't see it.
When did it happen?
24th, she said.
The day before Christmas.
Yeah.
And we were provided with precipitation charts as well.
Could be plowed that day? That sounds like a dumb question, but-
I believe salt was being spread in anticipation for snow, so the plow would have been in the upright position anyway, which makes this damage-
I mean, throwing snow could cause some damage, minor damage, but if there's no throw, snow to throw-
Exactly.
How would it damage the, and I mean, there's other potential causes for the damage as well.
Yes, if you pull that up, and I don't know how to make that bigger right now. Maybe plant, nope, that's the wrong way. Maybe the minus, nope, that's the wrong way too. Oh, here, I just saw it. Sorry, the computer literacy here is just wrong. I'm not gonna lie. There we-
Wrong what?
I'm trying to make it bigger. Oh, it doesn't make the picture bigger, it just makes it-
What do we need to do regarding this? What, what do we, what do you need?
I've emailed saying we won't replace it, but she's requested that we replace it to its pristine condition or there's possible action against us if it's not completed by the 13th.
Well, since we have legal counsel here tonight, which is unusual, Mr. Legal Counsel, what's the rules on mailboxes? Especially if we didn't destroy it?
Right, so, so, so for this type of situation, and the first thing I'll note, just sort of as a matter of course, when, when, since legal action has somewhat been threatened, it may be wise to make your, your carrier, your insurance carrier aware just of that. But I would say for, for any sort of action, municipalities are generally immune from tort liability under the Political Subdivision Tort Claims Act. One of the exceptions is for negligent acts related to vehicles that are being used or under the care, custody, or control of a, of the municipality. But, but here, the, the burden would be on the individual to demonstrate in some way that it was indeed the, the act of the municipal, the township's plow that, that caused the damage. It's not, it's not as if it would be the township's burden to demonstrate that it wasn't. So, we have a photo. There's been some specific assertions in this, in this letter, but you know, for what it's worth, I'm in agreement with what seems to be the unanimous thought that there's no way that if the plow actually hit it, that it would have caused just that minor damage. So, as far as what the next step would be, it's somewhat dependent on, on how you would like to, to move forward. I think if you're inclined to believe that it's just simply not possible that it was, that, that the damage shown in that photo is the result of, of the township's plow, then I think perhaps just a, a short and sweet, brief written response from my office to, to the individual explaining the township's position and that they don't intend to, that the board doesn't intend to take any action in response to her request and that if, if the threatened legal action does arise, we will defend it vigorously. You know, I would note that for, for all the more that, that damage appears to show there, it would seem foolish for anyone to bring legal action over that, but you never know and she has threatened it, so.
I look at it and it looks to me like the nail rusted off along, and, and it just fell off.
That's what I thought too.
Looks like that white piece was nailed up to that board. You can see where the three nail holes, you can see them on the photograph. You know, it probably just, pressure, you know, it's pressure treated wood, it would attack the nails if they weren't hot dip galvanized and probably just fell off of there. It's probably a coincidence, but-
Or a neighborhood kid was hanging on it or, you know, I mean, there's any million things that it could have been, but there's, to me, there's no evidence that that's a snowplow.
No, it does look like plow damage.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Or does anybody have anything else to say on the subject? Would anybody want to make a motion to have Denise send a letter to the lady saying we are-
It would have been Zach from, from the solicitor, from our attorney.
Well, we can pay him or we can pay Denise. I mean, if you feel strongly about it, we can have Zach do it, so.
I think it would seem more professional and get to the point more so.
Are you gonna make the motion?
Sure, I'll move that we have our solicitor send a letter to, what's her name?
Brenda Black.
Brenda Black, I'm sorry. Explaining the situation and the ramifications that would come from forcing legal action. I don't know, I butchered that, I'm sorry, but-
Perhaps I could-
Yeah.
Throw some language together and you can say that motion.
There you go.
But perhaps a mo-, a motion to authorize the solicitor to respond in writing to the request indicating that the township does not intend to take any action upon that request and that if legal action is brought, the township will vigorously defend it.
So moved. Do I hear a second? Moved in second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, citizen comments, the next one. I don't know if I'm saying this correctly or not. Hyacinth Kim, you here?
Yeah.
All right. You got something to say, please say it.
Come up to the microphone, please.
If you could state your name and your address for the record.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Sit, okay. So, let me greet with my Buddhist way. So, thank you, everyone, for welcoming me to this meeting. My name is Hyacinth Kim, so H-Y-E-S-C-O-N, and last name Kim. And I'm Korean, so that means when I get married, I still keep my last name. And I live in 58 Saddle Ridge Road, Port Matilda, which is a charter farm neighborhood. So, thank you for inviting me to speak why we need to pass the proclamation of the Luna New Year celebration. So, I came here in 1994 as a graduate student and my husband is an exchange student. And when he got his PhD, he went to many other places for interview and I remember his excitement when he had the interview Pennsylvania tuna. We should go Pennsylvania tuna. And I'm like, why? It's in the middle of nowhere. And he said, no, the mountains is just like home. And that got me, oh, really? Looks like Korea, like a hometown? By all means, let's go. So, we came here 2005 and we made a home for my family and I really find the Half Moon was my home. I, my kids got involved in Boy Scout and I volunteered for the park and rec and I made a home and I didn't really think about my presence, how I was visible to other community members. But then last April, and there was a shooting in Atlanta. That was a miracle for me because I never thought myself as a sexually objectified Asian women subservient, but the tone of the mainstream media, that's what they picturing me, someone like me, Asian woman. And then in May, I heard the township passed the resolution for celebrating Asian American Heritage Month and that really felt great. I'm like, I've been recognized, I am visible, I'm seen. And so, this celebration of the Tiger Luna New Year, I thought maybe we could do something similar because we live in globalized economy and what's the largest US trade partner? Obviously, Canada, Mexico, but what comes next? China, Japan, Germany? And guess what? South Korea is the seventh largest trading partner. So, by knowing how other people celebrate this Luna Year, we are educating our future generation to get to know your global partners and how to be more inclusive and also welcoming. And as a Penn State is one of the Big Ten University, there are over 10,000 students here and in Central County, we have over 10,000 Asian American immigrants making this a home, contributing and making a living, honestly living here. So, if you could pass this proclamation of the Luna New Year, that would be really great gesture for me, people like me, that we are here, we are visible and welcome here. So, thank you.
Well, I move that we- How do I want to word this one? I move that we declare, what's the, I'm sorry, what was the date? February 1st, thank you. I move that we declare February 1st Lunar New Year in Half Moon Township.
Can you clarify that?
The proclamation, excuse me. I, 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 that we proclaim Lunar New Year in Half Moon Township.
That Lunar New Year is what date?
February 1st.
2022.
2022, yes, I'm sorry.
We've got a motion in a second. I'm gonna say, first of all, I'm gonna say, welcome to Half Moon Township. I think it's a nice place to live, we hope so and I'm sure your family is contributing to our community. I am okay with the township recognizing the Lunar New Year as February 1st or 2nd?
1st.
1st. You got me confused there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I butchered mine.
I'm okay with that as far as the recognize, recognition of a, of a, of a special day. I don't want to call out anybody specific, but you know, if just, if somebody has a special thing, they want us to recognize, I'm okay with that, but I just, I, I don't want to say if you're, you know, Chinese background or German background or English background. I don't want to, I don't want to get into people's races. I want everybody to celebrate and, and have a positive feel for things. So, I'm okay with the recognition of the holiday. I just don't want to get into racial minutia, let's put it that way. And I know a lot of people are from different countries and they're all, that recognize Chinese New Year. So, I'm okay with it as a national brand kind of thing. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Do you have a motion in a second already?
We do.
Yes.
This is a discussion, so this discussion is between us and also any public.
Yeah. I think it's important that we recognize the racial diversity, the racial and ethnic diversity within the township. We do, it, it's not as great as it is in large urban areas, but we do have diversity within the township and it's important for us to make everyone within the municipality feel seen and heard and, you know, that we respect the beliefs of not just those who look like us and, and, and worship like us, but you know, everyone within the community should have an opportunity to come to the board and, you know, speak of why they are having issues involving their ethnicity or, you know, to celebrate their ethnicity. So, I think this is a, a good stance.
This is, that, I got a que, this is not based on a specific underlying problem or concern, it's, it's something you want to celebrate and acknowledging a, a holiday in your culture.
Not just my culture, Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese, Mongolian, Singapore.
So, they have them-
They all-
They all have this-
Across Lunar New Year, they celebrate. However, depending on the region, the animals might be different. So, we are celebrating the year of tiger this year.
Oh, the animal might be different.
Yeah.
All right, well, as long as we're not picking out a specific animal, we're okay. All right, I guess call for the question if nobody else has anything to-
I would like to note that we received emails not supporting this from John Lewis Hoover, Roseanne Hoover, Eric Hoover, Sean Hoover, Michael Schaefer, Jerry Anderson, Tanya Pick, Michelle Shelberg, Connie Jones. I would also like to note that we received emails supporting this from Mary Hawes, Ron Revance, Nick Sick, sorry, I always miss- Thank you, I always mess it up. William Herbic, Herbert Mottar, Jenna Lynn Viera, Virginia Squire, Lori Strauss, Kelly Herbic, and Adam Polinski? I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
Can I add any merit to supporting that as well? I apologize, I didn't see that online.
And Georgina Mottis, my husband, Herbert Mottar.
And I would like to add my support too. I was gonna say something in public comment, but I think Kim just, just was so articulate and it was quite passionate and beautiful to me.
Yes.
And like, I'm Asian, but I'm, I'm Japanese, but my cult, my, whatever you want to call it, does not celebrate Lunar New Year. Historically, my culture abolished it in the late, early 1900s. So, but I, I still recognize it. I still recognize that wanting to be, be seen in Half Moon Township as a minority.
I think it takes a special kind of person to move here from another land and move out into the country. I mean, a lot of times people move into New York City and places like that because there's other people with the same culture, but it, it takes a special kind of person to live out in the country anyways. So, there's a, there's a certain, a certain amount of self-determination and self-reliance that goes with that, so. All right, well, let's call for the question.
We actually have one more person who wants to speak publicly.
Yeah.
Very quick.
Can you state your name and-
I'm Roseanne Hoover. I live on Marango Road. We've been here 31 years and I just want to express my confusion on how this proclamation fits within, like, the parameters of the township supervisors. We've been in the meeting now 20 minutes. We have not gotten to true township business yet. I agree a thousand percent. We had wonderful times in Boy Scouts and with the Revansics also. They're near and dear to my heart. I agree a thousand percent. But I don't understand how a proclamation can be put in the agenda to be taking time when there's so many other things of importance to the township that should be worked on. I think if the meetings were shorter, you would have more people willing to sit on the board and be a part and make decisions, but this seems like a distraction to me and I, I am open to anybody that can explain it differently.
Roseanne, it is true that this is not part of our regular action and because it's just a celebration of a day, like, if, if you want to come in, you know, and celebrate Amish Christmas, I mean, I, you know, whatever, as, as long as it's not picking out one, you know, like, everybody does December 25th pretty much. It's not just tied to one religion. New Year's, it's just a celeb, as a celebration, I'm okay with it. If we were just recognizing one specific culture, one specific religion, then I got a problem with it, but you know, it's one of these things. So, I, I'm okay with the recognizing the day and, you know, I, we, we don't, you know, we're not borough gods. We can't make things happen like they can in State College. I mean, we're just lousy township of the second class out here in the middle of nowhere. But, you know, we do have some other stuff on the agenda and we're gonna try to get to it, but if it can make some people in the community happy, I'm all for it, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I elaborate just for a minute? I think, I think you would find that if, if you went around to the, and viewed the minutes and the agendas of the townships throughout Pennsylvania, this is normal order of business, this happens all the time. Different groups, I mean, we, earlier last year, had a proclamation to declare, I'm gonna get the dates wrong, but May is Bike Month. You know, there are just, it, there's, this is routine business. There's at least one or two at every meeting and they generally don't take very long and we do, we get our business done and, you know, we, we have plenty of time. In fact, often we end up canceling one of our meetings a month because of lack of agenda items. So, it's not really that much of an issue as far as the time goes, so.
I will just note that this will then, if it passes, be Resolution 2022-11.
Didn't know we were doing a resolution. I thought we were just making a motion.
Well-
That's what the proclamation is.
Well, so, and I, if I can, the proclamation, that, that particular phrase is specific to, and I, I see the, the, the initial email had referenced State College Borough. So, mayors in boroughs have the ability to make proclamations.
Right, we don't.
Proclamations are, townships of the second class can adopt ordinances and pass resolutions and resolutions are generally expressions of will or, or feelings on a particular subject, whereas the ordinance is where you're actually adopting law, which here, there's no intent for that, so.
I'll clean up my motion then and say that I move that half, we, we resolve that Half Moon Township declares February 1st, 2022 Lunar New Year.
One second. Okay, now we can call the question?
Yes.
Well, I didn't know we were doing a resolution, just a motion would have probably been sufficient, but if Denise wants to write up the paperwork, she can have at it.
It's done, Hyacinth did it.
All right, all those in favor of the motion signify, or resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We, we can't change the date, we can't move the time, but we're here. All right, approval of the agenda.
I wanted to make a public comment about the library. Is this my time to do it? Or is there, like, when can I do that?
Please wait till we get, if, if it's not on the agenda, then you can comment under Public Comments, but if it's on the agenda, you should probably wait till we get to that particular subject.
All right, it's slightly, it's a little different though, I think, than what you're intending.
I think she's our library representative and I think she wants to just-
I just wanted to give a-
Well, you know, if you had a major thing or-
The agenda's over there, that's-
Oh, I ran, I ran out of time.
You ran out, so.
Go ahead, please go ahead.
No, if you want me to wait, I will 100% wait. I don't want to irritate anybody.
I don't want to irritate anybody.
We can share, sharing here.
I saw the agenda, I just wanted to give an update on the lockers.
Oh, yeah.
I was not-
This is very exciting.
Now's a good time.
I was not gonna-
Yeah, if you want to do that, go ahead.
I was not gonna discuss anything further on the agenda at the moment. All right, so, the lockers have been installed at Way Fruit Farm. Some residents have been asking about them and they have been installed. We're working with Way Fruit Farm and their schedule and so, the lo, the new logo is on there from Half Moon Township. The library logo is on there at Half Moon Township. Residents will get the notice that they are able to pick up and then return books to the lockers via social media. And I want to make a point that the, um, this is a pilot program, so it's small and Half Moon Township has been designated as a pilot program and the lockers are only gonna be used for Half Moon Township residents. The card will have, you know, there'll, there'll be a code or a card or something that will only allow Half Moon Township residents to access the lockers. So, I just wanted to give an update on it because I've, as the representative, I've been asked quite a few times about that and-
What's the timeframe, one starting?
I've heard very soon. We're working with Way Fruit Farm on the schedule, but the lockers are there and are installed.
Yes, they're up and I just pulled up in my email.
I didn't know if they were running or not yet.
The stickers, the stickers will have the QR code on them as well and they have our new logo and the fact that it's a partnership through Way Fruit Farm, Shlo Library, and Half Moon Township.
Yeah. And, and they'll, and like, I don't know, for those who don't know, picture books will go in, those have been tested. So, you don't, yeah, the big ones, picture books, you know, like kids have and like-
So, is it, this is to pick up books that we can return?
And to return. Yeah. And so, you know, on bad snow days or weather, if you have little kids or you're more elderly or you don't want to drive in on a game day, there you go. Lockers at the fruit farm.
And not driving in on a game day is probably number one.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to give an update on that. I wasn't discussing anything else at this point.
I was trying just now real fast to find the picture of the lockers.
They're blue.
They're blue and yeah, they are outside of-
I, I have a photo of them on, um-
Here we go, here we go. Let me pull this up without pulling up all the rest of my emails. Okay. It's small, but you might be able to see, there's about like nine of them. Can you see the little photo there on the side there? Are they inside or outside? They're on the outside porch. On porch. Yeah.
I assume they're bolted down or something.
So, I guess you are on the library site and order a book, and they send you like a QR code or something, and then you kinda go to that, or?
Like, I don't like, I don't wanna like, be, maybe Virginia knows, but I don't think a hundred percent you need the QR code, right?
No, you don't, cuz I volunteer at the library on Fridays, and so I pull books for patrons. Now, instead of having the books put in the library, if you've arranged to have the book put in the locker, it will be put in the locker for you. You will receive an email from the library with the combination for the locker. You can go get the book. Yeah, it's really an exciting program.
Yeah, I asked about the QR code cuz I was concerned that maybe if you don't have a smartphone, I, I, I keep mentioning elderly people, but like, maybe me too, like, you know, like.
Can we, uh, come in when, when the thing's up and running and, and do a presentation to tell the people on the CNET and whoever watches on YouTube how this process works once it's running?
Sure.
Cuz I'm sure more than just the people in this room are interested in what's happening. Okay?
It's exciting.
Alright.
Actually, one more thing real quick. So, Sharon, I think what would be a great idea is, you know, everybody uses social media these days. If, once they are up and running, if you wanted to do yourself a little quick, like, demonstration video of how it all works, and then we can throw it up in the neighborhood, um, group and, uh, put it up on the township website and those kinda avenues. That way, one, it will alert people that they're there and available. And two, it'll explain to everyone real quickly how everything works, so we are not in- inundated with questions, so.
A hundred percent, you can see what I'm reading, I'll check them out, or I'll go online, or make a video, it'll be fun.
Great, thank you.
Let's get down here through this agenda so we can all get done. Uh, approval of the agenda. I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at it. I've got one thing that I would like to change. I shouldn't have been on there, and it was not my intent to have it on there. It says, under oh, these new business, number six, Part B. It says, "Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Half Moon Township's Participation in Center Region Council of Government's Agencies." And as number one, Center Region Council of Government's Articles of Agreement. And number two, Shlo Library, Regional Library Articles of Agreement. It was not my intent to bring in here to take any action. I wanted to talk to the solicitor about the article, or the agreement itself, not with the individual agencies or services being provided. I learned some stuff the other day about the contract that we have with the Center Region and some of the other entities, and I have a bit of a concern with that. And I know some of the other board members do too. And if you guys are okay, I'd like to take the action part of it off. We just wanna have a discussion this evening. If you're cool with that.
I am.
Bob?
I, I have.
I will make note that that was, uh, possible action was what I was directed for, that's why it's on there, but possible action doesn't mean action will happen.
And if we take it off, then I guess that also means action won't happen, so I'm fine with your amended, uh, agenda.
Well, somebody wants to approve the, uh, agenda with the amendment.
I, I move that we approve tonight's agenda with, uh, the, the lone amendment.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Denimously approved, okay.
I came for that item. That's why I'm specifically here. And I, so I have some things I'd like to say, I wanna make sure that.
I think.
So I don't know when.
That's, uh, Agenda Item Number Six.
So, there won't be a time to, to mention that?
There'll be a time to discuss.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think when we get to the part, you'll see why the solicitor's here, not necessarily because of any particular service. It's just the, the, the contracts themselves, the way they're written, may need to be rewritten.
But I just, I just wanna make sure there's time that's likely specifically for that item.
Okay. Subdivision Land Development Plans or Conditional Uses in Public Hearings. Time Extension for the Don Houts Final Minor Subdivision Plan. And the plan expires, our time limit as a township is limited to ninety days. If we wish to, under the law of Second Class Township Code, the township has to respond to the developer's plan submission. Um, time is running out. I guess Denise, if you wanna elaborate a little bit more as to where we are on that particular project.
Yes, it's still under review at the Planning Commission level. Don Houts was kind enough, as the developer, to grant us a time extension for ninety days, which will make the plan now expire May fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the board needs to accept that time extension.
I got a pointed order for the solicitor.
Sure.
Because the law says that we have ninety days to react to that, is it not the developer that is granting us the time extension?
Essentially, but it's, it's kind of a two-way street, because if you have a development plan that, in this case, it's, it didn't even get through the Planning Commission yet, the, the Board of Supervisors is the ultimate arbiter, decider of the, of the plan, has that ninety-day period to ultimately approve or deny the plan. So if your time extension, or if the ninety-day period that's provided under the municipality's planning code is about to expire, you would be within your rights to do not, to deny the plan. Because obviously, if it's still at the Planning Commission stage, then there's a number of things that, that need to be refined or, or clarified or changed on the plan. So it's really a sort of a two-way street. The developer's providing you additional time beyond what you were, uh, initially provided under the MPC. And, and you're also providing the developer with the necessary time to make the changes and to work through engineering and planning comments, so that the plan can be refined and then ultimately brought back to you for, uh, a, a final action. So, y- yes, the extension is really one that the, is requested of the board and that the board would have to grant, but it's kind of a two-way street as far as how the time works.
I'm sorry, I thought the developer grants it and the board accepts it.
Well, the, the, the developer is really providing the, uh, it's sort of a question of semantics, but it's the, it's the board's time restriction, right? So, it's, it's, it's really the board's, uh, obligation to act within that ninety days or get more time.
Obviously, we're not ready to go.
No.
So, uh, do I hear a motion to accept the ninety-day time extension? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alright, call for the question. All those in favor of accepting the ninety-day time extension on the Don Houts subdivision signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay, next up, uh, approval of the minutes. You have minutes of January third, two thousand twenty-two for the organizational meeting. And minutes of the January third, two thousand twenty-two Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. Can we do this in one motion? Unless somebody's got an objection.
I move that we approve the minutes from the organizational, uh, reorganizational meeting of the Board of Supervisors on January third and the Regular Board of Supervisors meeting on January third, third, two thousand twenty-two.
Do we have any, a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Consent Agenda. Ratify Payment of Bills for the Period of twelve eighteen, two thousand twenty-one through twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one from the following funds. The General Fund in the Amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And Part B is approve the bills list for the period of one one, two thousand twenty-two to one seven, two thousand twenty-two from the General Fund in the Amount of fifty-six thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-five cents. Mayor motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Moved in seconded, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Old business. I don't see anything on here, I don't know that we have any old business floating around, do we?
No.
Okay. New business. Pudersky Open Space Preservation Application. Do we get a new resolution number?
We don't have a resolution that we're packing.
Okay, it says pound number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven. And ten-year advanced payment request, property at twenty-two thirty-three Half Moon Valley Road. So, we've got application.
Whereabouts is that?
That is, when you're going out of town here, heading west. It's on the left-hand side. It's right before you get to Way's Fruit Farm. It's a big field there on the left, gives all the way back to, is it still the Todd property? Anybody know?
I don't know who Todd is.
Alright, well, it's changed that, so.
Richard Todd.
That is included on the agenda, as well as in the email that was sent out to the board. There's an aerial map that shows it. It's actually the property right across from Way Fruit Farms. There's a, um, tower on it, like a,
Electrical.
Thank you, electrical tower on it. It's this property here. With this one. Thank you. This is.
It's the other half of the, it used to be the Emil Peters Farm, and then Pudersky took that half, and Emil took the.
I don't know who these people are.
Emil was a former supervisor of Half Moon Township.
I couldn't remember exactly where it was, and, and I know where it is now.
So at this point, we received the application. There's a memo in there including the actions and recommendations of the Planning Commission, as well as the Open Space Board. What the board will need to do is, uh, based off of that, that memo that was provided, which is, um, direct the township solicitor to conduct a title search to make sure that we are in first lien position. And then render an opinion while the applicant will need to get title insurance.
Okay. I have a question about, upon receipt of the, no, wrong line. At the time of acceptance, the board will also consider a ten-year advanced request made by, uh, the landowner. What exactly does that mean? Are they asking for a ten-year advanced payment?
Yes.
Is that normal?
Yes.
It is, wow. Can our Open Space Preservation Fund support that at the moment?
Yes.
Can review that? That was one of those items that it doesn't matter if the title's not clean. It doesn't matter if the title insurance is done, you're skipping ahead. Um, the Open Space Board and the Planning Commission both recommended to not do the ten-year. We do have a financial analysis that we're working on. Um, the treasurer and I have talked. And we've gone through some of the, uh, scenarios. We'll hit that at the next stage. But the decision right now is whether or not you'd like to direct solicitor to conduct the title search and render an opinion.
It was just for the initial first step to.
Yeah, there's a couple of steps that we go through. We'll have to have a public hearing at one point as well. But we're not there.
So the, the payment issues down the road?
Yes.
Okay.
To echo your point, the.
If there's a cloud on title, or if there's some kind of encumbrance or issue that, that, uh, necessitates that the township will have difficulty obtaining first lien position, then all of those other questions may become moot, so that's sort of.
Yeah, I'm sorry, with all this information provided in the agenda, I thought we were moving a little faster on that, so I g- I get it now.
No, I wanted to make sure it was very clear as to what was happening.
Yes.
And people were provided with a lot of transparency, that if they had any questions, they could look and see what was happening.
How many acres do we currently have in the program?
Um, she is application number thirty-seven, that is what that number is showing up on your agenda.
How many acres do we have in the program currently?
Um, there are tw- over two thousand. I believe we're over twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred acres in the township have been preserved against development, um, commercial industrialization, is agricultural, or forestry, or open space. So, we've done very well over the last fifteen, twenty years. Took a while to get started, but I think it's been a very successful program.
So, both the Open Space.
Board and the Planning Commission have recommended that we accept, or that we s- that this application go forward, basically. And then, so we're approving that to go to the next step, which is the title search.
Yes.
Okay.
Do I hear your motion?
I move that we accept the Pudersky, uh, Open Space application.
Review by the solicitor.
Review by the solicitor.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Okay, moved in seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay, now to the big one. I was in the office the other day with Denise, and we were talking about, I had read the contracts that we have with COG and numerous other COG-related agencies. And I was a little concerned about how the wording was. And after listening to it, to our solicitor's opinion, I kinda got the idea, um, you sign up for a COG program and you can never leave. It's like the Hotel California. So, I asked the solicitor to come up here tonight to talk about a few things, but one of them is that contract, you know, not that we're necessarily leaving, but please explain to the people what the contract entails as far as if the township was to change its mind and do something different, what is involved?
Sure, yeah, and, and I'll start with the relevant provisions, and I think, I think they have this in their packet, is that correct, the actual? So, uh, the, the first provision I would point to is Article Four, Section D, which speaks to the withdrawal procedures for member municipalities of the COG. And it provides that a member municipality shall have the right to withdraw from the Center Region COG at the end of any calendar year by giving twelve months prior written notice to the COG Chair and the Executive Director. This notice shall be in the form of an ordinance approved by the, the Elected Board of Supervisors. Uh, that goes on to say, "A municipality's withdrawal will in no way serve to void or lessen any previous financial obligation incurred by that municipality as a member of the Center Region COG." So, while I would say, y- y- you, you can get out of it. It is a fairly onerous, um, withdrawal mechanism from a timing standpoint. It essentially means if, if there was a decision tonight, not, not a formal decision, cuz obviously you have to enact an ordinance, but if the, if, if the prevailing will of the board was that we want, we would want to withdraw. Those are the procedures that would govern, and it would essentially mean that to implement the withdrawal, that withdrawal would not go into effect until the end of next year, the next calendar year, twenty, uh, twenty-three. There's also provisions, uh, Article Article Nine, Section B two, which, uh, more narrowly speaks to withdrawal procedures, speaking to individual programs of the COG. So what I just read was to get out of the COG entirely. These provisions echo or parallel those provisions, but Capitol Region Co- or, excuse me, Center Region COG members shall have the right to withdraw from a program at the end of any calendar year by giving twelve men- twelve months prior written notice to the COG Chair and the Executive Director. Again, the notice shall be in the form of an ordinance approved by the governing body of the organization. Similarly, withdrawal will in no way serve to void or lessen any previous financial obligation incurred by that participant, and will not affect membership in the COG. So again, these were, that provision is just speaking to if there was individual programs that, uh, it was determined, you know, we, we value the role of the COG generally, but we think there are some programs that, that we don't get value from, so we're, we would like to withdraw. Same thing would apply, you basically, uh, it can only be done at the end of a calendar year after you've given a full twelve months' notice after an ordinance has been adopted. So again, that would be at the end of two thousand twenty-three is, is essentially how it's written. And, you know, I certainly wasn't around, uh, when, when the COG was created or, or when this particular agreement was, was enacted, but presumably the idea, the idea was to make it somewhat onerous to, to withdraw, so that there's some sort of long-term planning ability for the clo- the COG to, to plan out its programs and how it's gonna fund those programs. That's likely what, what the rationale was behind it. But, uh, tho- those are really the key provisions in terms of how do you withdraw from the COG, and what does it look like, and what are, what are some of the timing mechanisms for it?
You talked about another provision in there where the COG had to approve.
Oh, as far as amendments to the actual agreement itself, is that the provision?
Well, when we were talking the other day, it sounded like they had to approve what's changing or leaving or modified.
Well, they don't, they don't have to approve those withdrawal procedures, right? So those procedures govern, if somebody wants to withdraw, that's how it happens. Article ten, uh, does speak to amendments to the Articles of Agreement. Uh, so amendments to the Articles of Agreement must be initially approved by a majority vote of the forum, of the general forum. So that's what would have happened when this, uh, I'm sorry, amendments must be initially approved by a majority vote of the general forum. So if there's, to be an amendment to this agreement generally, for instance, if there was, i- if the board's position was, we'd like to see the withdrawal provisions be not, not quite so onerous, that amendment to the agreement would have to start with the general forum of the COG. And it must be initially approved by a majority vote. And then in order for the actual amendment to be implemented, it must be approved by unanimous vote at a second general forum meeting. And amendments shall not be effective until approved by each member municipality in the same manner as this agreement. In other words, they'd have to adopt an ordinance. So. The, while, while it's somewhat onerous in terms of the withdrawal procedures and the timing, it's even more onerous contemplating an amendment to this agreement. It essentially requires everybody to be on board.
Unanimous.
To amend this, for instance, if, if, if Half Moon Township were to propose, hey, we, again, like I mentioned, if, we think there's value in amending the withdrawal procedures or another provision in here, it's going to be very difficult for that amendment to go through because of the way the agreement's written.
That's kind of a side issue, that has nothing to do with, I mean, if we as a board were to select the withdrawal process and give our notice today that we would be withdrawing from a COG program or the COG in general. If we gave that notice today, that notice becomes active on December 31st of this year. And then we have to be, we have to remain in the COG under the contract until the following year. And at that time, at the end of 2023, we would no longer be financially responsible for anything COG as long as we've been paying our bills. So it's not a, a, a contract we can't get out of or that it never ends, it's just. Yes, it's an onerous procedure to withdraw, but that's because these are all local governments that provide money into this economy of scale with the COG. And you have to plan ahead. You can't just have people coming and going through the organization at the drop of a hat, which in the space of a few months, when you're talking about municipal government, is the drop of a hat because everything moves so slowly. So. That's why it's written that way. I mean, I object to the idea of leaving the COG, I think it's a bad idea. But at the same time, I'm not going to sit here and stomp my feet and scream and holler about it because I don't have the votes, you folks do, and if that's your intent, then
We're not trying to vote, leave it to the COG.
I, I understand that, I'm just trying to make my point. It's just. We have to do, if, if, if this is your intent to have this board decide to withdraw from either a program or the full, the full COG, we need to do it the right way. Because if we don't, we're going to open ourselves, we're going to open this municipality up to serious legal jeopardy and we're going to end up paying far more dollars trying to get out of this contract that we will end up having to pay for anyway, than if we just do it the right way and be patient and if by the end of 2023, if that's the way this board decides that they want to pull out, then that's when you got folks would finally be out.
I don't, okay, me personally. My, the purpose for me wanting to discuss this tonight was to understand what exactly we have. What kind of contract do we have? What are our options in terms of, let's say, for example, negotiating certain aspects of the services that were provided? Certain pricing, things like that, okay? For me to understand as a new member, all right, what is, what, what can we change and what can't we change? That's, in a nutshell, that's what I want to understand as a board member. I made no, I made no suggestion that we get out of COG. They provide services, we pay for those services, but they provide them. I do want to understand in an enumerated fashion that what we get for what we pay. I do want to understand that at some point, Denise and I have talked about it and we're going to work on, you know, me getting the information that I need to understand that. We should always be, be thinking about the cost of the services that we get. Okay, and it, it is, you know, COG council of governments is a very big organization. It's, it's a, it's a bureaucracy, like lots of bureaucracies. And I want to understand what the value is. It's one thing to say they provide all these services, but it's another thing to, to look at the value of what they provide compared to what we pay. That's all I want to look at. That was the purpose of this discussion tonight. It wasn't to make changes, it wasn't to get out of COG, but I want to understand what we're getting. And I want to understand what options we have to change, you know, change the service level that we get. Should we decide that that's in our best interest? And are there other options to the services that they provide? These are just things that we can look at. You know, we don't need to make, we don't need to take some kind of rash action to, you know, we're going to get out of COG, you know? But we, I think we need, and, and I wanted to have this discussion in a public meeting so that some folks in the, in the public can understand a little more about what it is that we do. What it is that COG does, what kind of agreements do we have? I mean, for example, Articles of Agreement, I, that's a form of a contract. Okay, it's worded that way for a reason. I don't understand specifically what the difference is between an article of agreement and a contract. I'm not an attorney, I'm not well-versed in that stuff. But that's, you know, I, this, it's new to me. So I want to understand what it's all about. And I think along with me understanding, I would like the public to understand too. It's, it's an uncomfortable sometimes discussion to have like this, but I think it's instructive too. And I think there is, there's value in the process of discussing these things. So that's why I wanted to bring it, put it on the agenda to discuss. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to anybody else who wants to talk about it.
Ron, I agree, I think that we need to look at each thing that we participate in, but this is going to take a period of time. And as you said, if we follow the contract to get out, we're not in a hurry, we need to look at each item, we need to look at the data. And we need to look at what the services are provided, what it would cost elsewhere and the advantages of being involved with a larger body of government that helps provide us a lot of things that as a smaller township, we can't do on our own or don't need a full-time represent to do. And like I said, I think we need to look at each one and I'm sure we'll step through that with COG's help and with Denise's help to, to work that out. And I, I think that's beneficial for all of us, not just for you as a new board member, but to revisit those things, confirm that yes, this is good, confirm something may need tweaked a little bit or something's not. So I think that's the process we need to look at.
Chuck, well, we'll get audience after the supervisors talk. I know you got an opinion.
I always have an opinion, I try to keep it to myself. I, I agree with what these guys are saying, we just need to look into things and, you know, are we getting our money's worth for, maybe we don't use this thing, maybe we do use that more. You know, everybody gets all up in arms, oh, you're going to bail out of COG. No, we're not talking about bailing out of COG, we're talking about looking at a contract that's costing us a lot of money and are we getting the full benefit? That's my opinion.
Well, I do know there are certain programs that are optional. What they, which ones they are off the top of my head, I'm not sure. But there are also a set number of programs that when you are in the COG, these things are, this is what you get for your COG membership. And I don't think you can renegotiate or try to à la carte those things because that's not how this works. That's just not, you know, the Articles of Agreement are written a certain way because they, they need to standardize services within the region to, to a certain extent. I, as far as having a conversation of looking at those optional components. I have no objection to that, we can look at things, you know, and I, I don't disagree. If we all of a sudden come across something that we are completely not using, then yeah, we need to pull out of that. But we, again, we need to do it the proper way, we need to put in the notice and it's going to take a couple of years. But, you know, you got to get the ball rolling, so anyway.
Township has limited funds, limited resources. And my issue is that if the COG program is so great, why do they put such an airtight program out there for the townships to be members of it? I mean, if, you know, people have disagreements all the time and they get divorces and they walk away from, you know, neighbors or whatever the case may be. But we're locked in for two years on this thing and even if we want to do an à la carte change, the process is onerous.
Again, that's because the budgets are written and if, if you, if you were to yank your funding from any one COG program or the whole program or whatever, you're going to negatively impact the municipalities that are around you that are still participating in that council of governments. And, you know, we're all supposed to be good neighbors with each other, so.
Supposed to be.
Yeah, so, you know, that's, that's why it's written that way, so you're not blowing up another municipality's budget.
Our deal with our solicitor is one year, our deal with our engineer is one year. We don't go into a three-year contract with our attorney and say, if we don't want him to work for us anymore, he has to agree to it. You know, it.
Well, maybe I shouldn't say this.
We are the elected officials on the board here.
We, I actually serve at will, so.
Well, right.
So if.
I, I know that, but, but we still have an agreement with your firm. But we are the elected officials here and previous elected officials signed up for the contract that binds the hands of this current board. It binds the hands of future boards. And, and you're certainly able to say, all right, we, we quit, but we have to give notice on the 31st of December and then we got to pay for another year. I mean, even if we decided now we were going to leave, and I'm not talking about leaving, but what I'm talking about is I don't think the contracts are fair contracts to municipalities. It doesn't matter whether it's Patent Township, Ferguson Township, State College, Borough, whatever, if you're not happy with something and you want to effect a change inside the COG and they'll say, well, we're all members of the COG, we get to vote. The problem is, I've been looking at this game for 30 years. And when I see the, the COG there, they irritate one or two municipalities here and there, but to get all six municipalities on the same game and say we're unhappy about something doesn't happen very often. So, you know, it's your money, you're the taxpayers. 15% of our revenue is going in there to the center region and some of it's good. They have the best planners on the planet in there as far as I'm concerned. Their planning people are just absolutely outstanding. Now, I'm on the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, I can't think of a single thing that ever affected Half Moon Township on the MPO. I think it's kind of an à la carte thing, I just throw that in for free. But, you know, there are other, there are other aspects, like the TV camera there, what are we up to, $18,000 a year? For the CNET? She's checking her book. So, you know, that's a lot of money to pay for televised meetings. And I see you're all here, so, and I'm glad you're here, it's nice to have people in the room again, it feels like township's alive.
Televised meetings fulfill a large chunk of the sunshine law obligations.
Yeah, but so does the tape recorder here on the desk in the recording secretary and that's a lot cheaper. So somebody out there had a question.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
I do too.
I'm Virginia Squire, I live on Loveville Road, I've lived in the township for 20 years.
I'm sorry, Virginia, so the microphone hits you up.
I figured maybe it was a short comment.
Well, I mean, I guess I have to follow the rules though of saying that I'm a resident of the township. And I really appreciate, Ron, your comment about wanting to know where, you know, how does it work? So what I would also like to encourage you though is make sure you take advantage of all of the training opportunities that are available for new supervisors. I know that, I, and I used to be the Half Moon Township library representative. I think you've been invited to take a tour of the library. And I would really like to encourage all of you to take, talk to Lisa Reeves-Collins, get a tour of the library. Find out all of the services that the library is doing for you. And that way you'll understand, you know, that little niche of the COG contract. So that's my only comment. Andy, your turn.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Merritt, 170 James Hill Road. I, I just want to begin with a different comment, I'm just going to say that recognizing diversity and the beauty and richness of other cultures in our community is exactly what this board is supposed to do. And I'll just leave it at that. The other comment before I begin on a kind of a little lengthier thing is, I hope you've all heard of the EU in the UK. So just, I would encourage you to pay attention to that. EU in the UK. So. Right, Brexit. So first off, I, I got numbers from COG today and then I verified them with the budget. So our contribution in, in, Mr. Piper, you're right, it's a lot of money, $163,000, there's no doubt about it. And so, but I want to make sure that we understand exactly where that money goes. So it's $163,700, once $163,700, there's 2790 residents in our community. That breaks down to about $58.67 per resident. For that, we get unlimited library usage, including eBooks and other digital content. We just sat here and celebrated what we're, what's happening at Way Fruit Farm because of what they've done. That's an incredible thing. It costs a resident for that, our, our contribution to the library this year is $52,000. That's $18.67 per resident. That's the cost of one book, per year, per year, that's the cost of one book on Amazon. That's unlimited books, any book from anywhere. It's absolutely incredible. Just, I would, I'd be a terrible teacher if I didn't, a history teacher if I didn't mention this, we do live in Pennsylvania, the birthplace of public libraries, so we can thank Ben Franklin for that. And we can expect our other townships to bear the cost if we pull out of the library, just as an example. Our residents are still going to the library and somebody's paying for that. We don't want that, we, we can't do that. Our library usage should be a source of pride, not a point of contention. It's absolutely something to be very proud of, we have a very literate community. Because I don't use it, I buy books, I'm a Kindle guy. I'm really happy to pay for it though. We get a professional planner, like you said, Mr. Piper, one of the best. It's not only we get a professional planner. If that planner can't answer a question, there's a planner in that office that can answer a question. Absolutely, absolutely, and it's fantastic. We get emergency management services. We get emergency management services. If we pull, so let me go back to, let me go back to the planner. If we pull out of COG in total, we still have to have a planner. We still have to have a planner, we just have to have a planner, there's developments going to go on here and it may cost us more money having a planner and we may even get lower quality planner. Back to emergency management, we'd have to have an emergency management person in our community. That would cost us money, we already have that with Sean Kaufman. You're not going to do much better than Sean Kaufman. We get emergency management warming shelter right down here at the Half Moon Church. When I talked to Eric Nordberg today, you know, he's like, well, if you pull out, if it happens, the stuff stays there, but somebody's got to maintain it. And we then also would have to appoint somebody to be the emergency management person and they would have to be trained and get all the certifications that Sean Kaufman already has. It's, it's a bargain. We also get a seat at the table. Whether anything's happened at MPO or not, I was never on that one when I was sat over there.
Just an example.
Right, right, no, no, but I, I don't know because I don't, wasn't on that. But we get a lot of goodwill. There's a lot of goodwill and if we pull out, that goodwill could fade. I mean, it's, it could be definitely a source of contention. We also get to work with the other townships in the event of an emergency. If our truck breaks down, we can call Ferguson, we can get Patent, we can get somebody here to help us out. If we make a sudden, so back to your point, Mr. Super, Mr. Piper, if we make a sudden move and you, you hit it, Bob, if we pull out of COG suddenly, you just might as well take the money you think you're going to save and just hand it to you because we're going to be sued. And that's what I would do. And you also may face a lawsuit from the citizens because you work for us. And I, to even talk.
That's the issue, COG works for us.
Absolutely.
But COG acts like we work for them.
I don't understand how, I mean, I just listed. I, I listed everything they provide us.
Popular, but that's the way it appears to me.
I'm wondering from that list, and there's a few other things, so I, you know, I could do the math. The planner's $52,000, the library's $52,000, whatever the numbers are, I'm wondering where you want to nickel and dime it, what don't you want to be in? And you're going to have to decide that. And if you don't know what COG does, you really need to.
I probably know more what COG does than anybody in this room.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do, you've been around a lot longer than I have too. So, but I'm just telling you that, sure, there's issues with it, I, I had issues with them when I was on the board and, but it's just one of those things. I, it is a bargain to me. $60, $60 of my taxes and I don't have to worry about an ice storm where I have a senior citizen resident next to me possibly dying because they lost power for three days because they didn't get to that warming shelter that they put in for us? That alone is, how can you put a number on that?
Is it, is it wrong to learn?
Absolutely not.
What this organization does?
I'll be glad to give you this.
Value is?
I'll be.
I mean, I need to, you know, I understand that. I'm on two committees, by the way.
Right, and I know that, I know that, because I was here at the reorg meeting. I would say, and, and Ron, no disrespect, the fact that you're just learning before you were elected what COG does. You're, you're a little bit behind where you need to be.
No, I don't believe that.
Okay.
Okay, I think when I'm sitting on that side, all these years, 37 years, you know, there's things that I don't understand that I am privy to when I'm sitting on this side.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
So. It's not necessarily fair to say that I, you know, I should have, or imply that I should have known about a lot of these. Although I do know about COG because I've worked with COG over these, even when I was at the university.
Numbers are numbers.
Because this is boiling down to numbers.
Well, I understand that and that's what I want to look at, that's what Denise and I discussed just the other day.
My suggestion is somebody who's sat on that side for nine years and we will disagree and I'm totally cool with it. You want to get rid of a program that's costing this township a lot of money and I don't think it does a whole lot for us because we get no value as citizens except no development? Get rid of open spaces.
I knew you were going to say that.
Two mil, that's two mil.
It is, it's two mils. It's two mils that doesn't have houses on it. It doesn't have children that need educated. It doesn't call up to complain and need any snow removal. It doesn't need a lot of things. It pays heavily into the township and real estate taxes on the houses, which the homes are still taxed. Well, the only thing it does is neutralize a little bit of real estate tax for the farmers. And the farmers are still there, and the land's still open. And you can imagine, we were losing a farm a year in Half Moon Township when that program started. So, when you run the numbers backwards, it's been a, and of course, the level of services have to go up every time a new development, when you get more and more people.
Yeah.
We're required to provide additional services, which require more taxes. It costs about a buck twenty-five in services for every residential house. The game lands is the ultimate deal. They pay us money, and they cost nothing. They never complain, they don't need anything, their mailbox isn't being hit.
Absolutely.
You know, so, open land is great for us. It gets groundwater preservation, controls stormwater. I mean, there's a lot of great things that, when you start digging into it, it's a much better program. And I know, two mils seems like it's expensive. But don't worry, the school district's going to make it up in one fell swoop, probably this year, to do what they do. I mean, we are limited in our taxing abilities, the school district is not. You want to be upset about the taxes? Go to the school district.
No, they are limited.
I mean, Act One has changed all of that. If you strangle development here, you're raising our taxes. You want to talk about taxes? We can talk about taxes, because that will happen. You strangle development, you then pass on the new costs, all the additional costs, to everybody sitting in this room, everybody watching.
But those numbers don't work. I'm going to have to disagree with you, Andy. I know for a fact.
Okay.
That the open land is cheaper to keep than it is to fill it full of houses.
Can I ask a clarification of you?
When you say, get rid of the open spaces program, you mean, end the open spaces program for new.
As a citizen, I get everything you're saying, and I agree with you on a lot of those things. It's great to have a lot of that stuff.
Sure we agree with, then we're disagreeing.
Oh, totally, totally. But, at the same time, I think it served its purpose. The people, I mean, we, I sat on this board for five years, and we put no new program, no properties in it for five years. And we knocked it around, I know there's one tonight, and that's unusual. That is unusual, and the 2,200 number is exactly spot on. It's about 2,200, 2,300 acres. And it's great. But it may have run its course, and it may be time to step back from that and say, well, maybe it's time to look at it a little bit differently.
It's very possible that we're done with.
We're going to be looking at it.
There we go. Well, I appreciate that.
We're on that committee, too.
Andy, I want to let you know that, you know, I'm the new chair here, but, and I know there's a lot of stuff on the agenda, and I'm probably going to have a lot of stuff on the agenda coming up through. Some of it you're going to like, some of it you're not going to like. But I want to get an open discussion and just say, nothing's off the table as far as what we can do and what we can't do, including open space. We're going to have a discussion on that.
Promise you, Dave, if it's something I like that you guys are doing, I'll be here and tell you. If it's something I don't like, I'll be here and tell you. So, I mean, that's.
And I wouldn't expect any different.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I just want to thank really seriously all of you guys. It's, this is hard work. It's hard work, and it's a commitment. I really appreciate it. But I.
You know, you did it for nine years.
I know. And as I told Ron in an email back and forth, the world looks different sitting on that side of the table. You know, it really does.
I've worked in the past nine days.
I know. So, thank you.
Okay.
One more thing. CNET is worth every dime.
Absolutely.
All right. I guess we can move on to the next thing. Board appointments to Open Space Preservation Ad Hoc Review Committee. Denise?
I'm sorry, were there any other comments from YouTube or anything? I know you open those, and typically, before we move on, they usually let us know if there's a comment.
I thought you were controlling the board, so.
I don't have the YouTube capability.
Okay, move on.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm Wayne Foster, 48th Circle. I've lived here for almost 40 years, I guess. Just back to, you know, you wanting to know more about figures and how it works and what benefit we get. To be honest with you, I don't know those either. You know, like you say, we all kind of need educated in that respect, or at least a lot of people do. I think there's a lot of value there. I'd hate to see it go away, but by the same token, and I don't know how, what, I was just kind of wondering, what's the process for, for learning that? I mean, is it, you sit in the office with her and you learn it? Or is there some way it could be done, not at a supervisor's meeting, but at some sort of a workshop or something where, where people can, like a public, open? What's that?
The Council of Government Meetings are open to the public, under the Sunshine Act, or you can probably watch it on CNET.
Okay.
If you're interested.
Okay. But I was just wondering about just, just a township learning process or a workshop or something where it could be done as a discussion for people to want to know, but they don't want to take up the supervisor's meeting to learn it. You know, you're going to learn it probably by going to the office.
What I learn can be communicated or shared with the public, so that they know. I would think that's, that's a, you know, possibility, do that in some manner.
Right.
I don't, you know, I'm not sure exactly what I would do.
We're having this with our attorney out in the public. We could have ran back in the back and said, we're going to have.
You're not.
Well, no, I mean, we could have had an executive session and discussed it with our attorney because it involves a contract. However, the contract is a public record document.
Right.
And I would rather have this discussion out in front of everybody than, you know.
Well, I agree, it's going to be very difficult to change the contract, by the sounds of it.
It's not an easy discussion.
No.
But it's something that I wanted to have publicly. That, you know, there's a lot of people that probably either don't think about it or have questions and don't ask them, or don't know what to ask.
So, for some way, when you, when you get your education, if you get passed along in some manner to the rest of us.
Sometimes when you have a public discussion, it has, it has an effect of making people outside of this room consider what we're talking about and then think about it. I mean, that's what it's all about. It's not about quitting something. It's not about, you know, any drastic actions. It's, if I don't understand it, I would assume that a lot of other people don't either.
So, I will offer that there, the COG website has the Articles of Agreement on it, that you can read all of this. It's only 17 pages. The library Articles of Agreement are six pages. The entire budget's available. All of their meetings have been televised. They're all public. It requires reading and some commitment to getting involved in your local government, whatever that may be. And to do that, there, all these things are public, all these things are available. It does require that you ask questions, but we are always willing to provide you with links or information. But spoon-feeding it is not easily done, and people don't come to a lot of the meetings and ask questions.
True.
So, get involved in your local government, however that might be. Volunteer on a board, read. Do, all this information is public and available to anybody. It does require a tremendous amount of reading and learning.
I understand.
And if you fall asleep, we'll understand.
That's all I have to say.
Seeing a lot of these things, too. And I think he's maybe more interested in exactly what we're paying for and what those benefits are, which is a lot of what we're going to be talking about, even just like the software package that code provides, that people can get their permits online. Like, there's all those kinds of things that if we weren't there, we wouldn't have advantage, have access to.
I'm actually working with COG to get those pieces of information, because I was directed to. And as such, we started learning some of the values that we didn't even know, some of the intangibles as well. The TRESA program that's coming up, I'll give you an example of that. That is an over-million-dollar program that we will be getting as part of our membership in code, which pays for itself, by the way. If you look at the line items within the COG budget, there's nothing that we pay into that. That's all an even.
We own the building.
It's all an even and out, based off of what services are being used. That's not allowed to be something that gains a lot of profit. That's, most places do that even and out through that. The package that we get will have the capabilities to do work orders, fleet management, which we do not have a fleet management program in place currently, or work orders. We're receiving this package. It was all negotiated as part of being in the COG and having the economies of scale and having the ability that we actually have a dedicated representative with the software package.
All right, you can skip the sales pitch, but.
Thanks.
Well, it is important. But we got other things on the agenda, and, you know, it was never the intent to say, COG's good, COG's bad. We want to look at the COG, see, can we get out of something if we don't like it? That's why our attorney's here tonight. We're going to have a discussion on it. Trust me, folks, there'll be future meetings. So, we're going to talk about what we're getting value for and what we're not getting value for. But I have an appointment after this, so.
Well, one thing, I'd like to just say something super quick. I think that it would be useful for township residents, like what Ron was saying, not just about, you know, the Articles of Agreement for the library or Articles of Agreement with COG, but like, a basic workshop about like, how many supervisors are there? The terms, the committees. When are you allowed to make a public comment? When are you not allowed to make a public comment? When in the agenda can you come in? I think a lot of people in the township would speak, but they're shy to come in and, and like, get up, and you have cameras and TVs, and it's like, can you?
You're telling us about the cameras.
Yeah, because I'm sitting here, and, you know, and I'm like, as a resident, as somebody who speaks, it's like, you know, I, to say, can I speak at a public comment? Like you said, oh, I should hold off. It's intimidating.
Generally, no. Generally, the way it works is, there's.
But I'm saying, most of the residents don't know that.
I know.
And, and as the Board of Supervisors, I think it's important on your agenda to, to let people know that, how it all works.
Maybe we'll have our manager have a training session.
Well, it doesn't have to be Denise's responsibility.
I wanted to make a citizen's comment. I wanted to make a comment earlier about my request. I've come to two meetings now, and I requested you to consider diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I considered it.
Well, right. However, you considered it. I still, and I don't know when I, when am I allowed to ask you again? You considered it, Dave.
Under Citizens' Comments.
Which, in the beginning, but you said not then.
No. I said, if it's something that's not on the agenda, that's, here's the way it works. We'll just do a quick rundown, and then we got to move on.
Should I wait to the good of the?
Well, that's generally the supervisors, but I don't want to be nasty to anybody, but the way it works is, when you have something that's not on the agenda, and you come into the meeting, that comes under Citizens' Comments.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, anybody can talk at Citizens' Comments. You can, if you've got something you're concerned about, something you want to talk about, whatever it is, Citizens' Comments is the place to do that on the agenda. If there is an agenda item, like approval of the minutes, and you read the minutes and you say, well, you know, Half Moon Township's completely misspelled, it's upside, down, and backwards, and, and you shouldn't be approving the minutes, then the time to comment of that is when it's under that particular item.
Right, right. But, so, this evening, I wanted to make that comment, and you moved very quickly through it.
Well, we got a lot on the agenda.
I know, but, but this is me bringing, this is the third, you know, I want, I would really like to know. You said at the last meeting, you were going to take, you were going to consider.
I did.
Putting, you're not the only person on the board. Bob said he welcomed the suggestion. So, I would like to revisit that and say, would you please have a discussion in front of all of us about can we put diversity, equity, and inclusion on the agenda?
Mr. Solicitor, is there anything about those things in the Township Code?
Well, I think that the question is, are you asking if there is to be a, like, a line item in the agenda, or?
That's, I came to the meeting, the last meeting in December, and I asked the Board of Supervisors to please consider a line item in the agenda. They said they would consider it at the first meeting. So, I came to the reorganization meeting, and I said, please put this on the agenda. Bob said he thought it was a good idea. Dave said he would take it under his advisement, and it stopped. So, I'm back again for the third time to say, would you please put this as an agenda item so that people who come with resolutions or people who come with training have a spot where their discussion could be held? Because I, I felt very.
Didn't we adopt a resolution tonight, five to nothing?
Um, Dave, I wanted to discuss this in Citizens' Comments. I wanted to follow up. That's why I'm here again. And you very quickly moved over Citizens' Comments, and it was like, wait, I would like to discuss this. That's all I'm asking, is could we please put it? And I said in December, and I said in January, there will be times when nobody has something to say at that moment. But we have citizens who have been here tonight saying, I felt seen for the first time. I felt seen by my township. All I'm asking you to do is consider, put it as a line item agenda.
Are you talking about? I need to understand what you're asking here. You're, you're talking about putting a standing item on the agenda for every meeting?
I'm talking, and sometimes there will, just a standing category. And sometimes you might get to the point where you say, oh, is there anything this meeting on diversity, equity, and inclusion? Nope, let's move on. But if there is a resolution to pass something, that would be where it would go.
All right, tell you what I'm going to do, because we got a limited amount of time tonight, as I keep saying. Denise, put it on the agenda for the next township meeting.
I can do that, if the board would like that to happen.
I think the board will consider that.
I move that we add a standing line item to the Half Moon Township Board of Supervisors' agenda to be a placeholder.
Not only the agenda that we approve, but.
Yeah, the, not this agenda, but the ongoing agenda template, let's say, to set that as a placeholder for topics of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Well, here's a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
I will say that there is a public discussion on the Zoom.
Well, the Boards have a motion here, so.
The Board had a motion and a second, there is no time for discussion.
The Board discusses first, and then we'll go to the citizens. Board, got anything to add, subtract, take away, multiply, divide, whatever.
What, is there, are there any underlying issues or reasons for requesting this? I just want to understand why you're asking for this.
Okay, um, I am asking for this because, because, one, I believe it's the right thing to do. Two, I was with Sharon when she came last year to ask the Board of Supervisors to pass a resolution saying that we acknowledged Asian Pacific American, Asian month. And the part that was profoundly moving to me was having people stop me and say, thank you, I feel seen. I feel welcome in this township. I have not felt that before. And I think that for Half Moon Township, to make room for this conversation shows everybody that we are welcoming, we value their presence, we value their contribution, and that they have a place here. And that's all I'm asking. I mean, that's.
Might I add that having a place designated on the agenda for a specific topic like diversity and inclusion may actually empower some folks who may otherwise feel that they wouldn't have a place to have their discussion about their issue, let's say. But if they see that there is a place on the agenda specific for diversity and inclusion, they will know that it is going to be accepted, that they come forward and be given this time and space to discuss whatever it is they need to discuss. If you don't have something that week, that month, whatever, you know, it's just like what we have here. Item five, old business. There was no old business, so we moved to item six. That's all.
Old business, or relating to township official.
Well, yeah, yeah, but just like, like I said, right here on our current agenda, it says line item number five was old business, and we didn't have any old business, so we just blasted right past it.
But it's been very difficult for me to know when I could bring this up. And I think it's very, very important, and tonight I had planned on discussing it in the Citizens' Comments, but we just went right through there, and it's like.
I didn't catch that one. I didn't catch that, so.
Well, my hand was in the air.
Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
I mean, but, and it's just because, um, well, I mean, I'm sorry, you look at the Board right now, you're all white, Patty, you're the only female. You guys kind of, sorry, sorry.
She's not on the Board.
Yeah, but, you know, she's not on the Board, but it's, it's hard to, this is hard. It's hard to express your opinion to you. And if I have, if there's a spot for me, then I can look at it and say, okay, now I know when I get to express my opinion.
I love it. That comment makes me uncomfortable. I mean, I don't know what being white has to do with me being a supervisor. Anybody can run for this office.
Right, I'm just telling you what it feels like for me as a female to try and have my, like.
But I think we all have different opinions.
Yeah.
On the subject, and, you know, as far as acknowledging that we are a diverse community, okay, we're a diverse community. I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, she's just asking for a line item on the agenda, so we have a motion and a second.
We also still have somebody who would like to talk.
I would like to let the person talk, if the Board doesn't have anything else. Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to voice my support for Virginia's proposal, and I wanted to say a couple of things.
Oh, shoot.
One, I think there's this idea, you know, that conversations around diversity and equity and inclusivity always have to be hard or fraught. And I think that we saw earlier, you know, this beautiful conversation happening about how we can provide this acceptance, and help people to be seen within our community. I also think there's this misconception that diversity, equity, and inclusion kind of doesn't include whiteness. And I would really like to kind of dispel that and say that every member of our community is diverse. And by creating an opportunity for people to come and speak, you may hear really interesting conversations that pertain to families in our community. So, for instance, you know, Jason at Way Fruit Farm has been having a conversation with our school district about whether or not the calendar is culturally responsive for farming communities who promote, or who participate in 4-H. And that is an issue that maybe could come to light in a diversity conversation, and could potentially provide him with an opportunity to get community support. So I think that there are a lot of ways that time could be used to support all members of our community. And I also wanted to make a point that it's really important for the Board to consider the well-being of everyone in our community. And that's what diversity and inclusion is about. It's about belonging, and it's about helping people to feel that they're included in a space, especially for people who have decided to make Half Moon Township their home. I think that is really, really important. As we know that the demographics of our country are changing, we are becoming more diverse. And as we become more diverse, those pieces attract people to Half Moon Township. And I know that in order for us to sustain a budget long-term, we need to be able to grow our tax base. And so I would also ask you, if you're not going to promote inclusivity within our township, how are you going to encourage people to come and be active members of our community?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, motion on the ground, seconded. All those in favor of giving Virginia nominee a slice of the pie here on the schedule every month, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, did we just vote?
You guys did, you voted.
Yeah, well, it did.
No, we didn't vote yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, are you ready?
Well, I was going to say, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Nay.
Looks like the ayes have it.
The ayes have it, so you're on the schedule.
Thank you.
Come in and diversify us.
Virginia's on the schedule, I think, something.
Yes, diversity, equity, and inclusion is on the agenda going forward.
Okay. Board appointments, the Open Space Preservation Ad Hoc Committee memo. Denise, you want a memo list, or?
Sure. Um, the Open Space Preservation Board is charged with, actually as part of the code in section 163-10 of the Township Code. It established the Open Space Preservation Committee. This started when it went to referendum and asked people whether or not they would like to have the two mills for open space preservation. As part of that ordinance, there was a review committee that should happen every five years or sooner. There are a list of types of people, or qualifications for people, to be part of that review board. The memo that was provided to the Board lists that out as far as what those items are for people to be appointed. The township staff collected information as far as who would be interested and who would meet those. I will say that the committee, as of right now, if the Board approves it, would be Ron Servello, Reed Moyer, Marty Maring, Mark Hartle, Christine Bracken-Piper, Mark Bockel, Ryan Hamilton, Susie Yatters, and Joe Vigilone. The Board should consider whether or not they would like to appoint those people, and whether they would like to task them with anything above and beyond the activities outlined in the memo, and also in the code for what the review period should look like.
Any motion from anybody to start discussion for appointment?
I'll move that we appoint the appointees for the Open Space Preservation Ad Hoc Review Committee.
Well, here's a second.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, I've moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None. Okay. Preliminary discussion for setting date for Board of Supervisors 2022 and 2023 work plan priorities. We've got a strategic plan on the list here for 21 to 26. The American Rescue Plan Act, the Township's received almost, or will receive, I guess, almost $300,000, which we can spend on certain things, and we need to talk about that. And the 2022, 2026 road improvement plans, which may be part of it. I don't want to get into a lot of the details tonight, but I don't know if the Board has considered. I know previously we had talked about updating Smith Road because it's in such horrible shape. And I talked to Patty, and I guess Bob, and everybody a little bit about this. I know we intended to do some drainage projects on Smith Road this year, and stormwater and that kind of stuff. But if we are potentially looking at spending $300,000 ARPA money, then I think we need to gather our information together to make sure we make good decisions, that the culverts are properly extended, that the stormwater is taken care of, that if there's anything else we need to add to it, that we do those things before we go out there and start digging ditches and swapping pipes. I know there's, Upper Half Moon Water Company has water valves and water pipes within the right-of-way of the township. Many may have to be moved, some may have to be moved, I don't know. But until we go out and find out, if we're going to widen the road, the other thing to consider is, obviously, the shoulders are going to be put back. The ditches are going to have to be further apart, is it going to require a taking, you know, an ermine domain, or a voluntary donation, or something by the citizens that live along the side? I mean, what are we going to have to do to make sure that this project happens? Obviously, we have, what, four years to spend the money, the ARPA money, but having been involved with some large construction projects and road projects over the years, I know it takes a long time to get this thing hammered out. And if that's something that the Board is interested in, then we could vote to go forward with that. And in a related thing, even if you don't want to act tonight, I want to have a work session on, what is it, 27th?
Yes.
Thursday the 27th, which is our regular meeting. I don't want to make it a twice-a-month thing, but I think we, as a Board, have a lot to hammer out in the way of infrastructure. And if we can sit down and dedicate time to that, you know, talking about what we want to do, where we want to go. You know, Patty and I talked, and she said something about a bicycle path, or it'd be nice that you could ride your bicycle, even if it didn't have a path. If it was set up so the road would be wide enough that you could do that on Smith Road when we do the redo. And that's going to take planning, it's going to take engineering, it's going to take a lot of forethought to make sure that all these things work together in synchronous fashion, and we don't end up with culvert pipes that are two feet too short to do what we want to do. Or a road ditch that's in the way, it has to be filled in and moved. Or find out we got a water line in the road, so, that nobody knew about.
Dave, I think that. The item here on the agenda is just to agree that we need to review these things and see how we're doing on our existing plans, and add to them, and then talk about the ARPA. And that's what Denise is looking for, for the, for Board of Supervisors, for our work plan. And that's what we're going to do in the session on the 27th. So we're not really discussing that tonight, but you're just giving us a heads up.
Putting it out there.
Well, there's a lot of different things, we're going to have to go through a whole bunch of stuff, and that's just one item.
The 27th is going to be basically a work session, to talk about this thing.
And to set our priorities, and hopefully to do a better job at setting our, at setting our agendas through the years to support our priorities through the year. Okay.
Now, would a work session be with, is that within a meeting and with the public? Or is that something just with us getting together?
No, we don't ever meet in private, except for executive day.
Well, executive session, yeah, so.
Yeah, the public could be here.
Okay.
But we don't necessarily, yeah.
We don't necessarily have to, but we need to make a discussion about what needs to be done. And the best way to tackle that problem, and I think that, that needs to go on there.
I propose that we meet early that day, just to kind of give us extra time. Would, would it be possible? I mean, I know you guys work late, you know, hours, I understand if we can't. But if we could get together at six, so to give ourselves some extra time to actually have constructive conversations, I think that would be a good idea.
Well, I think the meeting's already advertised, so I don't know if that would be a time limit thing for us.
Yeah, that's true. Have, do, have we advertised for this meeting on the 27th?
Yes, the meeting. The 27th has been advertised.
At seven o'clock.
I was just wondering if we could push the time forward to six, just to give us more time to have these discussions.
We can re-advertise.
Is there enough time to meet her two ads in the paper and all that good stuff? It's going to be close. You don't, you won't need two ads for just one.
Does, does the whole discussion have to be public?
Well, yeah, for being as a Board, we have.
If you have a quorum present for this particular item, yes.
I mean, you can't have an executive session to discuss it.
Not, not for this particular item, no.
I'm just.
No, good question.
Not that I don't want the public here, there's a lot of stuff in these plans.
I know it's a, I know how I feel.
Hey, these are dragging out longer and longer every time, I don't care. Six o'clock is final.
All right.
I think I could.
Everybody okay with making so?
Do we need a motion to re-advertise?
I think we can just ask Denise to run the ad, so.
Is that correct?
The Board can just give sort of a unanimous direction. I don't think a motion's necessarily required, you could certainly do a motion if you want to, but.
Denise, are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, if we could re-advertise the meeting to start at six o'clock on the 27th, I think, then we can have discussions on these three items.
Okay, moving on then. Township Administration Offices: Remodeling Relocation Options Presented by Ron Servello.
Well, Denise and I met before the meeting, and it involves a minor addition of a wall, breaking out a part of a wall, a door, it's minor stuff.
Before we talk about the details, we're looking at, our contract is about to be up at the former Bar Farm Store Pizza Shop up here.
That we're renting.
That we're renting, and we have to be out of there by December 31st. So, we're talking about moving the office back to the back here where it was before, but it was not really set up to be an office. So, we want to make sure we have our electrical requirements, the communication cables, everything that is necessary, a private area where the manager can meet with people, and that kind of stuff. So that's what Ron, and if you want to just give a brief background, maybe that would be helpful.
You mean my background?
Yeah, a little bit.
Do I have to tell? No, just, well, I'm retired from Penn State, and I spent my whole career in facilities management, including design, construction, management of space, occupancy, furnishings, everything, every aspect of buildings. I spent 27 years with the University Libraries, by the way. Before that, I worked for HRB Singer for eight years, and I was in charge of facilities there. And I worked at Conrail the first two years of my professional career, doing major renovations and construction and things like that. So, I know a lot about this stuff. And, I mean, dealing with offices and providing office space for people has been a big part of my work life. So I offered to help Denise figure out how to move into this space, and how we can, you know, plan that out and get it done, so. And get it done at a reasonable cost, to move back into our building and get out of the rental space, or the lease space. So that's what it's all about, and we've already talked about some of the things we're going to be doing, what the plan, you know, the plans we have to put together, getting the contractors, and, you know, getting approvals and things like that, so.
That's for this year?
That's for this year. We're going to be working on that pretty fast.
Do you say the lease is up at the end of the year?
The end of the year, and we want to be out of there before the end of the year.
The Board of Supervisors approved this in late last year.
Yes, and we have it budgeted to move and do the construction at the new site. It's, it's, it needs to happen, because our lease is ending, and that's, it's not a good location over there. It's, we've outgrown our need of it. The only reason why we were there in the first place is because we were kicked out of this building because of the mold issue, which triggered the renovations. So, and I believe we had to sign a five-year lease at the time, and that lease is finally over. I mean, it was a, it was a bargain price at the time, but we don't need to pay it when we have this building. This building was also originally done in this fashion with the idea that we would be staying over there, because pre-COVID, we were renting out this room that we're sitting in right now on something of a regular basis, and that's not happening so much anymore, so we need to make better use of our space available to us.
All right, I just wanted to question if any of the Board had any objections to moving back there, if they had any other ideas.
No, we've already discussed that.
I know, but they haven't heard, so, just in case. We're pretty much unanimous about moving back here and getting this office set up. We think it's a good value for your tax dollars, and with Ron's help, because he has pretty good knowledge of these things, I think we can have a, hopefully, a really nice office for the employees, and a good place for the citizens, you know, to come in and meet and get dog licenses, and pay taxes, and all that good stuff, so. All right, Department Reports, Denise?
They're there and available for you. The public works and the manager will have theirs as is normal, which is this last meeting of the month. If you have questions, let me know, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, concerns?
I would like to note that, two things. Due to some of the items that we even discussed tonight, and some of the interruptions that happened, I think the Solicitor and I have worked on a public meeting comment policy. I think that would be good to bring up next meeting as well, as part of the discussion items that we're doing for a work plan. I would also like to have a clear direction on the agenda and setting it as far as, I think we should come up with a work plan for the year, because there was a lot of confusion for who and what should be on the agenda. And I think having a clear work plan for the 27th can help clarify some of that, such as who responds to Board emails, who responds to different items. And I think we need to delineate some of that to make sure that we're not duplicating work or causing issues within the ranks.
Okay, Supervisor Reports.
I attended the Upper Half Moon, excuse me, Upper Bald Eagle Half Moon COG the day after our reorg meeting. It was a quick meeting, reorganized to, Mark Lively went from Chair to Vice Chair, and the new Chair is Tim Reese, if I remember correctly. from Chair to Vice Chair, and the new Chair is Tim Reese, if I remember correctly. Uneventful meeting. Unfortunately, I, I was hoping that the Fire Department would have been with us, because we still need to go over their capital budget. So we decided to reject a couple of their non-essential equipment requests, minor items that are non-life-saving, non-emergency use, an air pump, a couple other things. We decided to reject their request for those items, basically to, to make, to force them to come into the next meeting, so we can finally get that done. The, I also attended Human Resources, Cog Human Resources, yesterday. Again, standard reorganizational meeting, uneventful, talking about future topics on the year, and that's all I have so far. Executive has not met yet.
Thank you. Patty?
I have Finance and Facilities and Open Space Board. In Facilities, I am the Chair this year, and we have looked at, we're, we're starting down our program, look at a couple things. The, our Facilities Coordinator is looking at going around and reviewing all the facilities that Cog owns, doing facility condition assessments. He's doing a very good job so that we can be proactive on how we approach the facilities and not reactive when we have issues. So he just evaluated the three fire companies in town, and we are taking some action regarding what was found there, and we are also advertising for a project manager to manage the Whitehall Regional Park project and the building, Phase Two Education Building at Millbrook Marsh. And in Finance, we just had our reorg meeting this morning, so we're just getting started. We looked at some of the requests from Facilities, and nothing major to report yet on, on Finance. And Open Space, we've been talking, we approved the Podersky application a few meetings ago, and we just reorged this week, and Reed Moyer is now the Chair of the Open Space Board, and, who's the Vice Chair? Me. I was like, wait. Let's see if you knew. Okay, and, and I'm the Vice Chair on that, with that committee, and we thank Lauren for his service on that for, what'd you say, about five years now? Four, five years? Okay, and he's still on the committee, but he's not the Chair at this point, so, but we appreciate the service and looking for him for guidance to get us off in the right direction here, and that's all I have.
Okay. I attended the Public Safety Committee meeting on, when was it? I'm forgetting my days. Was that Mon, was that Monday?
Probably would have been Tuesday.
The 11th.
Usually.
Yeah, and it was reorganization meeting. I took a lot of notes and listened, it's, there's a lot to take in on public safety. I don't really have anything to report at this point. And yesterday I attended the Land Use and Community Infrastructure Committee meeting, same thing, it was a reorg meeting, and a lot going on there as well. And these two committees, I have learned that they do coordinate quite closely together, so I have a lot to learn, and a lot to take in.
I will say that the Public Safety Committee you're on is, there is a lot of information to absorb, but it's all great information, and, I mean, that's, that's one of those committees where you really, you find out more about what's going on with emergency management and what, what happens at the Fire Department in the greater area, not just within Half Moon Township, and I think it's a really...
That's good, because one of the questions I had in my, in my mind while they were talking about the Alphas and, and, you know, different fire companies was, how does that relate to Port Matilda Fire Company, Warriors Mark Fire Company, and other, other fire companies involved in the center region, so I just...
The Port Matilda Fire Company, it belongs to the Upper Bald Eagle Half Moon Cog. That's why we are on that, because they hold the purse strings to both the, the Fire Department and the EMTs. They are our primary, so when we have an emergency within Half Moon Township, save for the far west end of town, which Warriors Mark covers for us, when, when we have an emergency, they are our first responders. The trouble is, one of the things that we need to think about is helping fund the EMT service specifically, because they are to the point now with staffing issues and other financial issues where they have downtime, where they don't have coverage for us any longer, and which our coverage then defaults to Center Life Link, which is an additional 20 minutes away. Same thing with the Fire, Fire Department. If we don't properly fund and support our Fire Department in Port Matilda, then our backup, our default, is an additional 20 minutes from where we reside. So, and in, when you're talking about a house fire, 20 minutes means your house is gone.
Right.
So, you know, that, I can't stress enough that this community really needs to support Port Matilda Fire Company and the Port Matilda EMS service, so. Does that answer your question? About the relationship between the two, you asked about the relationship between the two fire departments.
Yeah, well, I was just, I was curious how they fit in to the regional fire safety or fire protection plan or fire response plan, you know?
Yes.
There are box calls, and they have different maps or response areas, and they back each other up, so there might be a first due, and then they have a second due, or if an engine is out, that might, they might go off-call, or if there's not staff, they'll go off-call, and then somebody else becomes first due and second due.
But their, their funding sources, they're independently funded, right? The fire companies are independently funded.
From the standpoint of each company?
Like, different entities contribute to them.
Yes.
Yeah, but they're not like, they're not one company.
No, no.
So, I mean, and, and, and I say this, that I, I'd like to know that, I'm gonna learn that, I'm sure. I'm gonna learn more about how they all work together. It just, it's my first meeting, so...
Yeah, they, they operate as more of a partnership than a financial conglomerate, let's say. They all benefit from firemen's relief for equipment, and of course, Alpha Fire Company has vastly more resources available to them because of their tax base.
Well, they seem to be the preeminent...
Yes.
Fire protection in the region.
But they also cover all of State College, which has a population of 100 and, you know, however many people, where we have 2,800 people.
Right.
And it's all volunteer.
Yes, exactly. Our is all volunteer right now, which I believe Alpha is still 100% volunteer, but they are moving rapidly in the direction of having paid fire, paid, paid officers, so.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Chuck?
But I ain't on any of them. I don't have anything. Anything for the good and welfare by the border.
I'd like to just make a comment about the economy and inflation, and, you know, inflation is a real thing. It is going to impact everything we do, both from, you know, the private side, the individual people, as well as government, and everything, the cost of what we're providing is going to go up by virtue of inflation. It's just going to happen. So we've gotta be, you know, it, it makes us manage our money even more difficult, managing our money even more difficult. So, just wanted to point that, you know, inflation's gonna be a significant factor this year, and we're gonna all, we're gonna, we're feeling it right now, but I just wanted to say that, so.
Anybody else?
Nothing else.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.